Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Elaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Good morning and welcome to the June 28th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. My calendar's thought for today is attributed to, this is interesting, I can't pronounce it, Eli Cordobes, I apologize, but it's interesting. He said, "Courage is believing in yourself, and that is something that no one can teach you." Ma'am Clerk?
Okay, under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Trial expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It was just the one or two names that, was it the, when I saw had just one name on it?
No, there were, there were some that were added.
Was it?
This is the most recent one, I think.
I saw this morning. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I want to make sure, thanks.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to advertise notice of applications, excuse me, under the Uniform Depository Act for many financial institutions legally eligible which may desire to submit a written application to become a public depository of public funds of Lorraine County as provided by the Uniform Depository Act, Section 135.33 Ohio Vice Code. The current contracts will expire on August 22nd, 2001. New contracts will be entered into for the period of August 23rd, 2001 through August 22nd, 2005. The highest amount of active money which may be on deposit at any given time during the contract period will not exceed $92 million. We have to publish the notice in a Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on July 9th and 16th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Um, okay. Basically what we're doing here is just looking for advertising banks if they want to participate in holding their money, right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay.
And it's a four-year contract, which is a little different. In the past, it had been two years.
Oh, really?
And the code, I believe, requires the four years. I guess I had a discussion with the Treasurer and he noted that.
Okay, so right now, who do we use right now? Do we use several institutions or is this just for one institution?
And I believe there are several, are there not, Mr. Cortez?
My understanding is that there's several. I don't have a great deal of knowledge on this issue, but I believe that's correct also, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into a consultant agreement between the Lorraine County Job and Family Services and Steen &amp; Company of Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of $110 per hour, not to exceed 180 hours, to assist Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency in reconciling their sets depository account. The total costs incurred will be reimbursed from the CSEA allocation. Like to authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
And that total comes to $19,800, not to exceed, and also move.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to award contract to Lidle Construction Company of Worcester, Ohio, in the amount of $104,504.23 for the Gore Orphanage Road Coal Mix Project. The estimate of that project was $113,654. Lidle Construction Company was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications, and funds for this project are available in the Motor Vehicle Gas Tax Engineering Projects Account, which will fund 100% of the cost. The county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
To reject bids received for the Columbia West River Road Resurfacing Project, following the bid opening, it was discovered that some bid documents had been issued which did not contain the supplemental specifications that govern the asphalt composition and asphalt cement content. Since not all bidders were bidding on the same asphalt design, the county engineers recommended that all bids are rejected and this project be rebid. Like to re-advertise in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on July 3rd and 10th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Who's paying for that? Mr. Cortez? Is that coming out of his fund or?
Motor vehicle gas tax, sir.
Okay, thanks. I just wondered about the advertising.
That also gets paid for, a motor vehicle gas tax.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to advertise requests for proposals for the purchase of refurbished stoves and refrigerators for eligible TANF and PRC clients through the Department of Job and Family Services. Like to publish this notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on July 2nd and 9th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into childcare provider contract between the Department of Job and Family Services and Horizon Activity Center, the Allen Side in Elaria, Ohio, effective retroactive to June 8th, 2001, expiring December 31st, 2001, and authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter in the lease agreements between the Board of Commissioners and the following agencies for office space located at 42110 Russia Road, Elaria, Ohio, for five-year terms, effective July 1st, 2001, expiring June 30th, 2006. Now, the first lease agreement will be with Ohio State University Extension Program. The OSU agency will have the option of paying an annual payment of $31,511.40 for the first three years of the lease, as opposed to monthly. The Commissioners will have an option to increase the rental amount for the last two years of the lease agreement, not to exceed 12% of the total amount. And the second lease will be with Lorraine County Soil and Water Conservation District. They will make monthly payments in the amount of $1,609.33 for the first three years of the lease. Commissioners will also have the option to increase the rental amount for the last two years of the lease agreement, not to exceed 12% of the total amount.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Jim, you want to explain how this, are we renting to these people? Are they, are we asking?
Which issue is that, Commissioner?
Who's the landlord? Are we the landlord on this address?
Which issue is that, Commissioner?
Item number seventeen.
Thank you.
Forty-two, forty-two 110 Russia Road.
Okay, at this point, I would like to defer to Mr. Fote. Because my schedule was so pressing, I asked him to take care of this issue for me, which he did, and he's available here. So Jeff, would you come forward and discuss that?
Yeah, we are the landlord. That is our building.
So who's paying the money on this? Then we're paying ourselves, or we're asking the Lorraine County Soil and Water Conservation District to pay us to use the?
Yeah, Lorraine Soil and Water is paying on the one lease and the Extension Program's paying on the other lease.
Okay, and what we got here, then, we're, we're okay for five years, and as long as they stay within under, under 12%, you're not going to bring this back to us then, right?
Correct.
Is that how this resolution's? Okay. Now, is that 12% of the total five-year plan or the three-year plan?
It will be 12% of the annual.
Of the annual?
Not, for the, we'll have the option for the last two years to increase the annual rate by 12%, not to exceed 12%.
Okay, can you put annual rate in there for us? On A and B?
Where is this being inserted?
Just somewhere so we have the annual.
Yeah, the 12% of total amount is deceiving.
Total amount.
It should be 12% of the annual total amount. Is that what you're asking, Commissioner?
Well, in our position, it'd be better to leave, but maybe I mean get more.
No, we've got, the actual lease spells it out.
Oh, the lease spells it out?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's fine then. I'd like to say, "Good job, Jeff," or covering for Mr. Cortez.
And there's also, there will be a third lease to come when it's finalized, and that's from Lorraine County Farm Services Agency, which is also located in this building.
Yeah, that's a federal lease, and there's some nuances dealing with the federal government that we weren't able to complete prior to putting this on, but being that this was going to expire, Mr. Fote felt it prudent that we get, at least get these two done.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Request of the Ambush Board of Education for grant from the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District for playground equipment for the Shoop and Nord Elementary Schools.
If they're here today, would you all hear him speak?
Is there someone here? Oh, thank you. Would you come forward to the microphone, please?
Have the microphone back there? That's okay.
And identify yourself, since you're, will be televised.
Okay, my name is Dan Trent. I'm the Director of Special Education and a kindergarten principal at Power School for the Amherst Schools. With me is Mrs. Susan Gruba, a representative of the Amherst Parents Clubs. We've applied for a grant to build a playground at Shoop Middle School and at Nord Junior High School. Right now, the Amherst Schools are undergoing construction to build some new buildings, and if the building goes as planned, in the 2002 school year, Shoop will become a kindergarten first-grade building, which I'll be principal of, Nord will become a 5-6 building. Neither school has appropriate playgrounds, so we're asking for funds to help build a playground with recycled materials. I brought with me today some samples of the materials that we'd like to use and a picture of the playground. Our original grant was for $23,000, the request. Since then, we learned about a new service structure that we can put on the, on the ground that which will make it safer for students and be longer lasting. A company called Turtle Plastics in Lorraine makes this product. These lay on top of a foot of rubber chips, which makes a nice fall zone for children, plus it's long-lasting. That would increase the cost of the, of our grant to $37,000. The actual playground, this is the actual playground, if you can see from there. It'll hold approximately 100 students at one time. This is for Shoop School. The playground at Nord consists of tetherball pools, basketball pools, and swing sets.
That's it?
Questions?
How much of that material are you proposing to put down, the covering?
There's about 1,700 square feet of this. The brown area beneath all this would be enclosed with the rubber.
And that's manufactured in Lorraine?
Correct.
Wow. Recycled?
It's all recycled materials, yes.
So by going that way, that's what upped the grant then, from 24 to 37 was used?
Right, that's the difference in cost.
Okay.
Right.
And you're looking to go up to that amount, not to exceed?
Correct.
Okay, and you guys are also in the process of raising funds for the excess and?
We have an art auction scheduled for August that our parents' clubs have put together. We hope to raise $10,000 from our present parents' clubs to put toward the project.
Okay.
The request, you won't be doing this, you're working towards this project, but it won't be completed and/or erected until next year for the school year next year, according to your application?
That's correct. If we get funds earlier, we could start earlier. Although it's older children, it still could benefit the neighborhood that surrounds Shoop School. But we don't have a need for it for the school until we reorganize, which is planned for 2002 now.
So you just need to know, you know, that you have the money coming, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think maybe it was suggested to us that we adopt a resolution of intent to supply, or not?
Well, I would recommend a resolution of intent to, to offset whatever they raise in their, their funding, not to exceed the amount, the adjusted amount that they're asking, so that when they come back, we don't have to pass another resolution at that time.
You lost me.
Well, I believe the total sum being asked for is 37,000?
Correct.
It was?
Some pennies.
Yeah, 37 and some change. You have the exact number. I saw, I didn't bring my facts in with me, I didn't know we were going to discuss it that length.
The total amount is $37,476.
Okay, so what I recommend is that you pass a resolution not to exceed that and that it's, it's offset by any money they raise during their fundraising.
I think that we should establish what we're going to contribute in a certain extent and comment upon them to raise the rest.
Right.
Okay, okay.
How about 25,000?
If they go with the 25,000 grand, then it's their choice not, well, then they're going to use basically recycle funds, correct?
Right.
And therefore, if they don't have enough money, they're not going to do the flooring like that, because that's the most expensive part of it, because they were coming in for 24-something in the beginning.
Wood chips cost around 5,000, $4,600.
Right.
This would be 13,000 and some odd dollars.
And how long, what's the life expectancy of that?
Of this?
Yeah.
Well, one school in Huron has had it down for seven years, and it still looks like it was just put in.
And wood chips, once it rains, some of them will be flowing all over the place.
We, we installed a playground at Harris School two, two years ago in May, and wood chips then were about $4,000. We spent about $2,000 this spring to add to it already. It's supposed to be a 16-inch base, and it got down to four inches in two years. So about every two years, it costs $2,000 to upgrade it.
Now, you're going to need more than 37 overall, aren't you? Isn't that extra 10,000 to go towards other, because there's certain issues that are not recyclable, right?
Well, the concrete for the basketball courts was not included in the grant. That money could go, the regular, money we raised could go towards concrete for basketball courts?
Right.
And so forth. We, we've not put in the grant money for cement to put the poles in.
Right.
And there's no money allocated for construction costs. If we can do it with all volunteers, we will.
Well.
I'd rather just go with the 37,4, and then just, because they're going to need more than 37,4, it sounds like to me, to do the whole project.
The cost of installation for this is $4,000 if we contract out.
If you can, is that including the 14,000? No, you have to pay for your own?
No, no, it's just materials all we ask for.
Okay. Because if we go back to the original grant of 25,000, that's 24-something, they wouldn't even put that in. Why would you want to spend an extra $15,000?
Right.
Plus another four grand to install it? That's 20,000, you know, 19,000.
That'd be hard, yeah.
So, I mean, I just like the idea of promoting a Lorraine County company that's recycling, I mean, solid waste, you're right, Dan. I mean, this is something that's kind of sounds like a win-win to me. Lorraine County Company, recycling and a playground. But we don't have, or it's wood chips, I guess. I see three wins here versus wood chips, that's all.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all.
Actually, what we're using for the playground cover, there's actually two companies involved. The plastics company is located that, that makes these out of recycled plastics, the squares. They're made in North Ridgeville. The company that has the design patent and the sales is Turtle Plastics, but they're located in Lorraine.
Okay.
So we're actually helping two companies in the, in the county at the same time.
That's promoting recycling, so, so, I mean, I'm comfortable with the 37. If we go with the 25, I'd have, I don't know, you guys probably wouldn't even be able to put in the flooring this way, would you?
We'd opt for wood chips.
Yeah, and that's, so really, it's wood chips or flooring.
I don't know if we can put that flooring in the Justice Center, too.
Well, I think, maybe, maybe in the courtrooms. Once again, I think we're pointing out the fact that we can stimulate our own economy, churn some dollars in our own economy, support two local businesses, and support recycling. Seldom the two issues collide in such a good collaborative effort.
Is that okay if we, if I make a motion just to go up to that, and then?
And then they'll have to work with the solid waste department on the distribution of the money.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Well, make your motion.
Okay, so moved. To go up to 37,000, not to exceed $37,476, and to work with the solid waste, you know, Mr. Bellman, regards to getting the proper material. How's that?
I'll, I'll second that, in view of the fact that that's, that appears to be the more desirable.
I might add, Commissioners, that we have had some preliminary talks with Mr. Trent, and, so we have a, a good rapport going, and the, the squares that are made in the county are, are going to be more acceptable, I think, throughout the, the state. Now, we've got a couple other projects that we did already with Penfield, which come out really nice, so it's, it's an asset to the county and the Amherst School District.
Thank you.
Ma'am, where's question? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye. Did you have a question, Elizabeth?
Yes, just a, a question. Will they all be of colors?
We have choice of colors. They can color any color. We prefer just all green. It'll blend with the grass.
Mary Beth?
Why are these people not going through the Department of Mental Resource for five recycle programs that have 50% match?
Mary Beth there, Kito's asking, can you respond to that, Dana?
The ODNR grants have already been approved, and they'd have to wait till next year to do that, but probably it would not be a project they would approve at this point in time if they're going in a, in another direction.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you for coming this morning and with that information. Would you continue?
Okay, we'd authorize Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for a local law enforcement.
We did, didn't we? Did we vote on it?
Oh, did we? Oh, okay.
Can we do it again?
Sorry. No, once is enough.
Okay. Authorize Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for a local law enforcement block grant for fiscal year 2001 to the Bureau of Justice Administration to reduce crime and improve public safety. Grant is in the amount of $34,738, with a local match of $3,860 from the general fund. Equipment to be purchased will be an overhead video system, metal tech, 1,400 metal detectors, and a detective pocket latent kits. This application must be submitted via the Internet by July 13th, 2001.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion.
The sheriff is here, and did you want to make any comments, Sheriff? Are you just here to answer questions? Or your chief deputy, Mr. Mahar? Hey, I got it right today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just elaborate a little bit, the overhead, excuse me, what the overhead video systems are, they're the inboard cameras for the cruisers, so they either, they also protect the, the officers, and if there's any question in traffic stops or any type of incident, it's all on videotape and it could be used in court. The pocket, there's small little pocket dust kits, latent dust kits, that we're going to issue out to the deputies for burglaries and stuff like that. And the metal detectors, they're vibrating, soundless metal detectors that fit on the officer's belts, and we're going to use that in the court system for protective pad downs or whatever situation comes up. So that's why we're applying for these things.
And the match needs to come from the general fund?
Right.
$3,860, so, Mr. Ocasie, that's duly noted?
Yes, we do have money for this.
And whose budget?
Sheriff's.
No, in our budget. It's not the sheriff's. It's the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
To authorize the release and payment of retainage to U.S. Security Systems Incorporated of Montgomery, Alabama, in the amount of $3,279.24 for work performed for the Lorraine County Correctional Facility Detention, Furnishing, Security Doors and Frames Project. The contract is complete and contractor has submitted the necessary paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to award the following contracts for the Lorraine County Emergency Operations Center addition for the 911 Agency, NEMA, at 322 North Gateway Boulevard, Delary, Ohio. General contractor will be Ohio Diversified Services Incorporated for $1,096,500. For the HVAC mechanical contractor will be Suburban Process Piping Incorporated for $67,400. The plumbing, fire sprinkler contractor will be LaGrange Plumbing and Trenching Incorporated for $104,900. And the electrical contractor will be Atlas Electric Construction Incorporated for $172,500, for a total of $1,441,300. And the architect's estimate on the project was $1,484,800. Now, the above awards are the lowest and most responsive bids received complying with specifications, and RLW Architects have reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, do you want to elaborate on this?
Are these local companies?
Unfortunately, the general contractor is not a local company, and there was nobody that was close enough in cost that we could have selected. But I am pleased to tell you that the, the three small contracts for approximately $350,000 were able to be awarded to local contractors, so all three are, are companies that are located and doing business in, in Lorraine County. Hopefully, we'll be getting this project underway. We'll be setting some parameters once we award the contractor, the general contractor, as far as scheduling and breaking ground, and when we can anticipate seeing our new building behind the gates facility for EMA 911. So you'll be hearing more very shortly after this.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to authorize the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to enter into a maintenance plan contract for the Windows version of the Quarterly Information Systems and Random Moment Sampling System, both of which are part of the DMG Ledger Suite. The contract will be with Maximus Incorporated, as previously known as DMG Maximus, and will be over the state fiscal year two thousand and two, which is July first, two thousand and one, through June thirtieth, two thousand and two. Cost of the contract for the combined agencies will be two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Now to proving the loan in the amount of twelve thousand dollars to Deborah Whitfield for startup costs for her business, DAW Electronic Claims Processing and Billing. The funding is approved from the Lorraine County Area Wide Micro Enterprise Loan Program. That's a LAMP program. Loan application has been reviewed and approved by the LAMP Review Loan Committee, and they recommend approval. We've authorized the President to execute on behalf of the board.
I'll some move.
I will second.
Mr. Twining, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. This morning, we have before you a LAMP loan. And I would ask that Melanie Long present this particular project to the Board of Commissioners. Melanie and the business owner receiving the loan are here today, and they can come forward, excuse me, and address the Commissioners. Thank you.
Melanie Long and Ms. Deborah Whitfield, welcome.
Good morning. This is our second loan from the LAMP program. I'm very excited. It's for twelve thousand dollars. And this loan is to start a new business for, it's an electronic medical billing business. And it would be called DAW. It's a real long name, Electronic Claim Processing. She's a former York employee. I think this is kind of what LAMP was meant to do, was to try and revitalize some business jobs here in Lorraine County. And I think it's like, this is like the perfect kind of loan we're looking for, a new business, somebody who was displaced from York. And I think it's going to be a good loan.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Whitfield, and I'm applying for a twelve thousand dollar loan to start my business, DAW Electronic Claim Processing and Billing. I've gone through training and I've gone to Florida from July eleventh to the fifteenth for training for my software. And I've gone through training for the medical office and every, you know, went through all the necessary steps I had to take to take this step.
Well, this is a good opportunity for you to market your business right now.
Give it an extra smile.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'm clerk.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you both.
And good luck.
Now to adopt a policy for all county agencies and departments, allowing public monies received be deposited with the county auditor within three business days next following the dated receipt, for funds not exceeding one thousand dollars pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section nine point thirty-eight. The department responsible will safeguard the monies until such time the monies are deposited.
I will some move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Comments, Mr. Cortez?
No comments this morning.
Do you have any report on those transfers?
I could, if you'd like.
Well, I thought we were going to resolve that.
Well, what I was simply going to do was have those transfers as part of the transfer package that you signed this morning, but.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I just.
Right. What Commissioner Blair is questioning is, we had a transfer on our agenda last week for EPA permits. And there was, we held it till this week, pending some questions that I was going to discuss with Commissioner Moore. Simply, what that transfer is necessary to do is to pay the fees to the EPA so they will look over some of the plans we have on tap for our package plans. I have a package in my office that I was going to provide to you. One of the jobs is replacing an emergency generator and so forth. They will not review any plans, and we cannot do any work until we pay their fees. All right? And that's, so this is not for work. It's simply so the EPA gets their pint of blood to look over what we want to do. And I was going to include that with the regular transfers on the transfer, on the business, earlier business.
Something else?
Well, Ms. Vacy had a question on the radio at EMA, and we held up the requisition for that. She wasn't here, but I'll go ahead and report on that. Her question was, were we going to install the radio in the new building? Or was it going to be installed in the old building and moved to the new building? And why were we buying it now? Well, we're purchasing it now because the building's not going to be completed until next year, and funds are available in this fiscal year, and we want to use those funds. So we're purchasing this radio for the new building while we have dollars available to do that. And I believe that will answer her question as to why we're moving in that direction now, just to use available resources.
Because I have something on my desk, and I initialed it.
And I do it also. Then is that, that is going to be included in the package?
Correct.
With approval then? Okay.
So, okay. So we don't have to vote on that? That's already?
No.
All right, thank you. Very good, thanks. Okay, Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioners' report?
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask the, Mr. Ennis, if he could discuss our policies regarding executive sessions and administrative sessions. I kind of had a shot across the warning bow last week in an editorial. So I thought if we could publicly just identify how we're supposed to report our executive sessions and how we're supposed to report our administrative sessions on Tuesday. And to make sure that the procedure is in place so that, that that's the last shot across the warning bow I get. If you could, just to make sure that we're legal. I mean, I want to feel a little bit more comfortable. If you don't mind explaining, I mean, I thought we had some policies in place where we would release the itinerary for executive session, but I don't know if that's being followed. So, do you want to run with it from that point, or?
Okay. As you're aware, any, any public meeting has to have specific provisions for notice to the local media and also to any person who requests that they receive that notice. And we do that with our general business meetings by establishing regular, regular meetings. There are specific reasons, and there are very limited, five or six reasons for which you can conduct executive sessions. Those include things like security, personnel, pending litigation, and so forth. And we are required, when we go into an executive session, to announce specifically what the reason for that meeting.
Now, is there a timeframe for that announcement?
Yes. Well, when, when you make a, in order to go into an executive session, you are supposed to make a motion in your public meeting, which is seconded and voted on. And at that time, as part of the motion, you are supposed to announce what that reason is.
So as long as we do that, as long, you know, we don't have to do it forty-eight hours in advance to notify anybody that we're having?
No, if you're.
So if we want to do it right now, if we made a motion, I could get a second?
This meeting itself would have had to comply with the advance notice.
So there is no time constraint on when?
Right.
Okay. That was one of my concerns.
Now, if you are then going to have, let's say you don't have one, and then Monday you decide you want to have an executive meeting by something, you would have to give the media a twenty-four hour notice unless it's a, an emergency. And then you have to go into, you're actually giving them notice of a special meeting. And you go into your meeting, and then you make your motion for your executive session. We've talked a lot about these administrative sessions, and there's another term that I hear in a lot of public entities, which are called work sessions. Those, that terminology really isn't a legal term that is in the revised code. Those are just kind of popular names that are given to these sessions. What the law says is you, I prefer to call them informational sessions. You are permitted to gather together and to collect information and be informed about things. And it really isn't a public meeting at all. In other words, I think some of the issues came up with the engineer. It's permissible for you to meet with the engineer and have him tell you all about what he does, a sanitary engineer, and describe his old department. And he can meet with you for ten minutes or ten hours and just inform you and give you information about his department. And that is really not a public meeting at all. Now, if you start talking about what will we do with the sanitary engineer department, and you go into, you go past the stage of just you being informed to the Commissioners doing the informing back, then that becomes a meeting. And you would either have to do that in an open public meeting or go into executive session and do it under a personnel issue if it's appropriate. So the key is, is receiving information from outside is not even a public meeting at all. The minute the Commissioners start expressing opinions regarding the merit of the issue, that's when it becomes something that must require with the sunshine laws. Now, having said that, even though you're legally not required to give notice of what we call administrative sessions, or informational sessions, or work sessions, or whatever you want to call it, we have always advised that, I think it's a good practice and good PR to let the public know about those things so that they know what you're doing back there.
Which I think we started to do, but with the itinerary. Are we still doing that?
Partially. It's, we have a mixed opinion on that from the board. I think some of the confusion's coming in that we're not listing things correctly on Tuesday morning, and I'm as much to blame for that as anybody. The executive sessions that we're having, Commissioner Moore, when you, you came, you asked that we have an itinerary for those, and we started doing that. But somehow, we blended our administrative issues with our executive issues. We have to, as Mr. Ennis pointed out, inform the public of why we're going into executive session. And there are constraints on what we, well, as Jerry said, what we can do. And we try to identify those issues, but we, we've also put things in under executive session that are actually administrative, and we shouldn't have done that. And then we've had some administrative things that should have been under executive sessions. So the clerk and I need to, and probably be, do more due diligence on how we're preparing that agenda for Tuesday morning.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to have it done by Thursday?
We're trying to have it published by Friday afternoon sometime. Thursday, Thursday afternoon at two o'clock was supposed to be the cutoff for adding issues, and we would print the, Madam Clerk, we would print out the agenda on Friday. Now, there has been some concern on the media's part because they want our administrative agenda, and my position, as well as some, some of the Commissioners' position, is they have no right to have that agenda. They do have a right to the executive session items that are going to be discussed, to justify why we're going into executive session, the legality of that. But as Mr. Ennis has pointed out, we can tell them we're going into administrative session, but we're not under any legal constraints to specific, with specificity, identify the issues that we're going to talk about. Now, that becomes a prerogative of this board, and I don't think we have a direction there.
Just the executive session, we don't have to worry about an itinerary for the executive session, just as long as that's all you're doing.
We can do that, recognizing that the bulk of our time, though, normally is spent in administrative sessions. I've tried to pop out of the room and inform the clerk when we've moved from executive to administrative, so we have some clear lines of how the events have unraveled. But the issue becomes, what the media has become, they've been pressing us for what we're doing in our administrative sessions. And I've been a bit standoffish in informing them of what's going on in those administrative sessions, much to their chagrin. The board probably needs to decide what they want them to know and what they don't want them to know, recognizing that we do most of our work in administrative. We met with Mr. Carney, we, the board took some bad publicity on that, and we were all there. Mr. Carney spent the bulk of his time in informing this board and updating this board on a lot of sanitary sewer issues that we had not, no knowledge of. I don't, I, for one, heard no decisions or information from the members coming to Mr. Carney. I heard Mr. Carney and our consultants informing the board in great detail with a great amount of in-depth specificity of the status of our package plans and our sewer lines in general, and that was permissible. Somehow, some folks in the media think we're having top secret meetings, and I don't know what they think we're doing, but.
Landis-Stein things.
Yeah, certainly.
No, I just want to make sure that as long as, I wanted Mr. Ennis to advise me so that we can make sure that we get the executive session minutes or the itinerary out on Friday afternoon, so that would be fine.
You want the itinerary for the executive sessions? What is our, what is our posture concerning administrative issues that may or may not be discussed? You know, sometimes we have items that we want to discuss, we never even get to those items.
I know.
A lot of times. So I guess I need to know what our posture is on that so I can respond appropriately on behalf of the board.
If I might clarify one thing also, even though you're not required to make an agenda for either an executive session or an administrative, administrative session, if you do generate a written document that is an agenda, then that document is a public record.
Right. What are you asking now?
I'll restate my question.
You're not under congressional here, I'm sorry. Want to cover the mic and talk to Jerry?
No, no, no. Do you, one, wish to have a, an agenda for executive sessions that is written and clearly spelled out that we will release to the media?
Not clearly, I think it should just be bullet points on an executive session and what we're going to talk about. I think what's been going on has been, the ones I've seen have been fine.
You, truly, Commissioner, you cannot say we're going into executive session for personnel. You have to identify.
Not just personnel issues.
You can't. Under the law, you have to identify what's, what's particular personnel issue you're going in for. There's some, there's some relief, but normally, you have to be more specific. Jerry, would you?
That's correct. You can't just say personnel, so you have to say personnel regarding jobs and family services. You are not required to identify the names of particular individuals.
So you recommend that an agenda, isn't it?
Well, I, I think what Mr. Cortez is saying is we just can't say executive session, personnel business, and have ten items under that. You would have to say personnel regarding this department, that department.
And you have a problem discussing administrative on an agenda?
Well, what happens is when we put stuff on the administrative and we print an agenda, and this is something Ms. Ennis and I have talked about, the, the agenda is a public record, even though we're not, we don't have to disclose the issues, they can simply request that document, and we're required to give them that document, number one. Number two, as you, both Commissioners' President well know, a preponderance of the time, we never get to those issues, or we talk about other issues that are allowed as administrative items, depending on the situation we get back there. And then we come out, and then the media wants a whole bunch of information on stuff, and we say, well, we didn't talk about that. And then it gets very suspect that we're withholding some data from them. And, again, if you want to have the agenda for exec, it's probably a good idea, but we'll have to give a little bit more information. And as far as the administrative sessions go, that's strictly your prerogative.
We go into executive session from an open meeting that's opened out here. We can identify at that time what the issues are going to be. We don't have to include them on the agenda. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. Prior to Commissioner Moore's arrival, we didn't use an agenda because of these complications. But because you wanted to, you know, take a look at that issue, we tried to do that again. And we're starting to run into similar complications.
Okay, so what, I think maybe the best thing to do is then every Thursday, just say we're moving into executive session. I'm sorry. I guess I'm talking to everybody, not just you. Thanks a lot. So the, with the best solution then, just to announce every Thursday at a public meeting that we will be holding our executive session, which is what I think you've done in the past?
You can. I'm a little concerned with what you would say the stated issue is, though. Can they make a general, say that they're going into executive session and state the issue if they decide to have that meeting? Because a lot of times, Jerry, on Tuesday, we say we're going to go into executive session for various reasons, we don't actually have a session. Do they have to give the reason at the time they asked for the session, or at the time before they convene the session?
Well, when you make the motion, you should announce the purpose. If you decide not to have the meeting or not discuss that particular item, that's no problem. Problem is discussing an issue that you have not included.
I guess my question, Jerry, would be if we establish Tuesday as our meeting day for administrative slash informational meeting, and, and the possibility of an executive session, then we convene the meeting on Tuesday morning, and, and we, we're going to go into executive session.
And you have new issues. You could announce new issues at that point.
Then we list what those issues are. And if there are none, then we're not having a meeting.
We, the original genesis for the Tuesday morning meeting goes back as far as nineteen ninety-five. We were having some difficulty dealing with personnel issues because we were, we would go to Thursday's meeting, if the meeting went on, we didn't get a chance to break and go into exec and discuss a lot of pending personnel issues, and we had a lot of things backing up. So back then, we decided that we would have a Tuesday morning executive session. And I believe the way we used to open that executive session was to discuss new hires or potential new hires. And then if there was other issues, we would have Madam Clerk inform the media, or we would do it when we opened the meeting of what those other issues may be, if there was litigation added, or an issue that was permitted under the sunshine law. Somewhere, we got somewhat off of that. Normally, we do need to have a personnel session to discuss either new hires or pay raises or things like that. So maybe we could move back into that direction.
Which is every Tuesday will be admin day, if we have to break for executive session. At that time, you let the media know we have the executive session?
I would say so, yes. If that's permissible, Jerry.
What you should really do is, is on Thursday, say we're having a meeting Tuesday. For the courtesy of everybody, so everybody doesn't show up, you let them know that all we're going to do is going to go into executive session, so there will not really be any public discussion. For courtesy and to be most informative to people, you should announce right then and there, we know we're going to be discussing these executive issues. Then if new things come up that you have not announced on Tuesday, when you have your public opening on Tuesday, you can add new executive reasons, but you have to announce those publicly.
Thanks.
Mary Beth, do you have a brief question or comment because we're behind time for a public hearing, so to speak? Would you come to the microphone, please?
Mary Beth DeRico, Huntington Township. Mr. Ennis, it was my understanding that to go into executive session, you had to do it from a public meeting, both to go into executive session. And then when you finished your executive session, which you could take no action, you would then reconvene your public meeting and then ask. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then how can you go into executive session from a work session or an informational meeting on Tuesday?
What he was saying is, and what I was saying, is we would have to have the public meeting, we would announce the public meeting on Thursday or Tuesday morning. First thing we would do is say we're going into. First thing we would do is say we're going into executive session to discuss these certain items. Now, at that point, if they decide to discuss some administrative issues in addition to it, that's, that can happen. Saying, if they say they're going to go into executive session at 9:30, and they don't actually start it at 9:45, or 10 o'clock, that's no big deal, as long as before they go in, they have to announce the reasons, vote to go into the motion, and then you're right, when they come out, they have to vote to come out of that.
So they've essentially closed their public meeting on Thursday for a meeting that's to occur on Tuesday. Now, how do they close a Tuesday meeting and get back into a public meeting, which isn't going to happen until the following day after Wednesday?
They will come out, Tuesday, they open the meeting, move to go into executive...
But that's not a public meeting on Tuesday, is it?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. We have to announce it on Thursday, that we're going to have a public meeting, but so that all these people don't show up thinking that there will be a lot of public discussion out of courtesy. We usually indicate that all we're going to do is vote to go into executive session.
Okay.
You know, years ago, John Moeller said to me, "Just because of things legal, it isn't necessarily right." I'm wondering if you're not muddying the waters quite a bit here.
Is that your legal opinion, Mary Beth? Thank you. Surely, we have very limited time.
I'm asking, reserving time to further discuss this issue when you...
That's fine. Want to come to public comment? Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to return to the first page of the agenda, a 10:15 appointment we have with Kathy Petry from Squire Sanders and Dempsey, and Sean Vollman, and Tom Trotter from Buckingham Doolittle, and Borough's Bond Council, representing Lurie Memorial Hospital Regional Medical Center. They are requesting a resolution expressing the conditional intent of the county to issue self-supporting hospital revenue bonds for EMH, and authorize the execution of agreement to issue bonds in the amount of $16 million. This issue was approved by the Community Investment Corporation at their Thursday, June 21st meeting. Kathy?
Good morning, Commissioners. What you have before you...
Kathy, can I interrupt you a minute?
Yes.
Since we have some new faces here, would you, people, please identify yourself and spell your last name, because they're having some problems.
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'm Kathy Petry, P-E-T-R-Y. I'm with the law firm of Squire Sanders and Dempsey, representing the county as issuer counsel in connection with this proposed bond issue. What you have before you is a resolution indicating the conditional intent of the Commissioners to approve this bond issue. And this is a common procedure. You haven't always done this with all of your bond issues, but it is a very standard sort of preliminary procedure, where the county agrees that, subject to the borrower meeting certain conditions, that the county finds that this project meets the statutory public purposes, and that the county is willing to proceed with the issuance of the bonds. And then the resolution also approves an agreement, which, you know, one of the most important components of which is the, it sets out the conditions, which are basically that the documents be acceptable to the county, and that evidence be provided at closing of compliance with state law and applicable federal securities and tax laws. And it also has an indemnification provision in it whereby the borrower says that, you know, whether or not the bonds are issued, that the borrower will hold the county harmless and pay any out-of-pocket expenses that the county might incur. So I just wanted to explain that, because I know that it is, this has not always been part of every procedure that you've done in issuing revenue bonds, but I think that it is a very common procedure, and one that actually is helpful to both parties. And this project is, has been the subject of CIC review and approval.
And then I have a question. Now, will there, and I, will there be a public hearing following this at some point in time?
Yes. Federal tax law requires that there be a public hearing prior to the final approval of the bonds, which will come later. You will have a bond resolution that you consider, and also, all of the final forms of financing documents will be filed with you, and that will be the final action that the county takes. And there needs to be a public hearing prior to that, and notice of that hearing needs to be published in the newspaper 14 days ahead of time. And I think it's anticipated that probably that hearing would occur at the same meeting where the final bond resolution would be presented, but prior to its consideration.
Are there any other comments that the people accompanying you wish to make, and so would you just...
Well, I wanted to introduce Tom Trotter from Buckingham Doolittle and Boroughs, who's Bond Counsel on this issue, and let him introduce the other parties that he's with.
Thank you, Kathy. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. It's nice to see you again. My name's Tom Trotter, T-R-O-T-T-E-R. I'm from the law firm Buckingham Doolittle and Boroughs, with the Bond Counsel for this transaction. With me is Sean Vollman, V-O-L-L-M-A-N, also from our office, and David Cook, who is the Controller of EMH Regional Medical Center. I agree with everything Kathy said. The county issued bonds in 1995, in the amount of $35 million, for the benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center. Part of the proceeds of those bonds were used to construct a new ambulatory care center at the hospital's acute care facility, and also a parking deck, and to refinance some additional indebtedness. The county also issued bonds in 1997 to finance EMH Regional Medical Center's wellness facility in Avon. This, by the way, all the debt service is, has been paid on both of those bond issues to date, and the hospital is fully compliant with all the terms of those bond issues. This bond issue is in the amount of $16 million. It's for the construction of a new maternity facility at EMH Regional Medical Center, which will be constructed on the ambulatory care center. They'll add a new floor there and renovate an existing portion of the facility. It's for a new utility facility for heating and air conditioning, and then for the acquisition of routine capital expenditures. The amount is $16 million. This will be structured very similarly to the 1995 bond issue. David Cook is with us today, C-O-O-K. He's the Controller of EMH Regional Medical Center. If you have any questions.
I have no further questions, since we participated in the CIC meeting, so I would move to approve the resolution expressing the conditional intent of the county to issue these self-supporting bonds.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you for your attendance this morning.
Thank you very much.
At 10:30, and we have a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of approximately 32 acres in Brownhelm Township. The petition was submitted to this office on March 30th, 2001, for the proposed annexation of approximately 32 acres in Brownhelm Township to the city of Vermillion. The petition was filed with the county auditor and engineer. The engineer reviewed the accuracy of the petition and map, and by report dated April 10th, 2001, the engineer indicated no discrepancies. The land is adjacent and contiguous to the city of Vermillion. Letter from the Brownhelm Township trustees dated April 13th, 2001, indicated this proposed annexation is a direct disadvantage to the township. The Commissioners, by Resolution 1-370, adopted April 19th, received petition and map, and scheduled this public hearing. I believe this should read, Vermillion City Council, adopted ordinance 1-R-3 dated January 4th, 2001, set forth services to be provided to this property if the annexation were granted. At this point in time, we are going to be open for public comment, both by those four and in opposition to this annexation. I would ask the Assistant Prosecutor to stand and swear in anybody who wishes to give testimony or speak to this issue. It's a formal proceeding that is required, according to our Assistant Prosecutor.
Would anybody who thinks they even might want to talk about this, please stand and be sworn in? Raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the statements and testimony you give today shall be the truth, that you shall act unto God, or that you tell me the law, or...
Mr. Garrett Murray, attorney, representing the agent for the petition, who is Thomas Caruso. Good morning, Mr. Murray.
Good morning. My name is Garrett Murray, and my address is 120 East Avenue, Lurie, Ohio. And I represent Thomas Caruso, who is the agent for Caruso Enterprises, Inc. It's an Ohio corporation, and it is the petitioner. We're here today requesting the annexation of 32 acres from the township of Brownhelm, Lurie County, Ohio, to the city of Vermillion, Ohio. The property is located on the south side of North Ridge Road. It's west of Baumhart Road. I have outlined on the map here in yellow the area to be annexed. It's 853.61 feet on the north, 16.69.93 feet on the west, 1603.61 feet on the east, and 852.09 feet on the south. The subject parcel adjoins the city of Vermillion Corporation line on its north boundary, and that is, the north boundary is here to what I'm pointing, and it's 853.61 feet. The reason for the request for annexation is to obtain the services of the city of Vermillion, such as police, fire, ambulance, snow removal, street repair, stormwater management, refuse collections, building codes, and zoning. And to obtain uniformity for the planning, development, and the services for the territory sought to be annexed. This situation is a little bit unique, but we have had this similar situation before the Commissioners before. And that is that my client owns 42.76 acres, and if you look at the map, the 42.76 acres is constituted by the land that is drawn in black, outlined in black, and the yellow area that we're asking to be annexed. He would like to develop that property into a residential subdivision of 21 lots of approximately 1.5 to 2 acres each. The current situation is that the land is vacant, and, but he already has developed some of the corner lots on the entranceway into the proposed development. The problem is that 10.76 acres, that area outlined in black, is in the city of Vermillion, while the 32-point acres that is outlined in yellow is in Brownhelm Township. So therefore, Vermillion has jurisdiction over the planning, the zoning, design review, the building code, over the 10.76 acres, while Brownhelm Township and the county of Lurie have jurisdiction over the development, planning, zoning, et cetera, of the 32 acres in Brownhelm Township. As you can see, the parcel has one opening for ingress and egress onto North Ridge Road. I brought with me today, and I will leave with you, minutes from the November 1st, 2000, Planning Commission of Vermillion, and those minutes are replete with questions as to if they allow the development in the city of Vermillion, what will be allowed by the county as far as ingress and egress? Will the development of this property and property further to the south, will that be through the city of Vermillion? What other lot sizes? Many questions regarding the development of the two, according to two different rules and standards. Some of the councilmen at the planning commission meeting suggested that my client might seek annexation, so that there would be, instead of two political subdivisions, or actually three, the county, the township, and the city of Vermillion, trying to decide to develop this property, that there would only be one political subdivision that would be doing that. Then the question is that when the property is developed, if there's the added problem, if there were two political subdivisions providing services, one would provide services for the front in the city of Vermillion, and the township would provide services to the subdivision, to the rear of the 32 acres. Those services would have to go through the city of Vermillion. Another problem that my client has regarding this unique situation is financing development. I have with me today a letter, and I'd like to read it, and I'll leave a copy with you, that indicates, it's addressed to me, and it says, "Dear Mr. Murray, Lurie National has provided and anticipates providing additional financing to Tom Caruso for his development on North Ridge Road west of Amherst. As you may know, the proposed development is located in Brownhelm Township in Vermillion City. My concern is that being located in a township and a municipality may impact Mr. Caruso's ability to secure additional financing to complete the development. Coordinating efforts between the township and the city increases his legal and other development costs, and decreases the money available to repay loans. In addition, the fact that there are two governing bodies increases uncertainty to a potential buyer. This uncertainty would cause a decrease in markability of the lots, and further decrease Mr. Caruso's ability to repay loans. I urge you and Mr. Caruso to encourage annexation of the proposed development to the city of Vermillion. If you have any other questions, or require any additional information, please call me." By ordinance 01-R3, Vermillion has described by ordinance the services that they would provide of this territory. They would provide a full range of city services, along with, of course, police and fire protection. That ordinance also provides that the city council of Vermillion wishes to encourage the county Commissioners to approve this annexation, as they indicate they believe the general good of the territory sought to be annexed will be served if the annexation petition is granted. I believe that Mayor Jim Davis is here today and will address you and answer questions regarding services. Now, this morning, prior to the meeting, we have submitted a transcript to the Assistant County Prosecutor and to the Board with affidavits covering the requirements of Section 709 033 ORC, which is entitled "Order for Annexation." And that transcript contains the petition. It contains the notices that have been delivered to the township and to the city, each of which have been receded by the respective clerks. It includes the publication in the newspaper for four consecutive weeks. It indicates that the subscriber is the owner, and the majority of the owners, and the municipal corporation has completed the, or has complied with Section 709-031 as far as their service ordinance, that the territory is not unreasonably large, map is accurate, and finally, that the general good of the territory sought to be annexed will be served if the annex petition is granted. So the issue here today is whether the specific standards that are established in 79033, Order of Hearing, have been complied with, and specifically, whether the general good of the territory sought to be annexed would be served if this annexation petition is granted. In the case of Estman versus Jefferson Township, Board of Trustees, the court indicated that one of the legislative policies of the enactment of 709-033 in 1967 was to give the owner of the parcel the freedom of choice as to the governmental subdivision in which he desires his property to be located. Also, in Inray Kucharsky, the court says that an area not being annexed is not one of the factors which the Commissioners may consider. Now, I have a copy of the Brownhelm Township letter to the Commissioners on April 13th, 2001, where they say in part that there is a distinct disadvantage to the township through said annexation. That statement is not one of the criteria of 709-033, and in fact, the court in Toledo Trust versus Board, 404 Northeastern, 2nd, 764, said... Trust versus Board, 404 Northeastern 2nd, 764, said, "A finding that the annexation would not be in the best interest of the political subdivision from which the territory would be removed does not satisfy the requirement of 709-033." So that statement by the township, that it is not in their best interest, is not one of the criteria that the commissioners would use in passing on this annexation. Inray Long, the court gave the definition of the words, quote, "General good of the territory to be annexed will be served if the annexation is granted." The court said that means the general good of the owners and inhabitants of the territory to be annexed. It also went on to say that, as used in this section relative to annexation, it means the general good of the owners and inhabitants of the territory. Inray Laricia versus Board of Commissioners, the court said that the legislature in enacting 709-033 has set the standards that a Board of County Commissioners must apply in annexation proceedings, in specific language, and has restricted the discretion of the county commissioners to a definite factual determination. That same court indicates that Section 709-033 directs the ultimate focus of annexation proceedings to be on the general good of the territory sought to be annexed, and requires granting the petition where it is shown that such benefit will result. In conclusion, we feel that the general good of the territory sought to be annexed here would be served if this petition for annexation is granted. First of all, my client has complied with the order of annexation of 709-033. If the annexation is approved, there would be uniformity in the development of the subdivision by developing according to the guidelines of one community rather than three. The general good of the territory would be served for reasons given, for financial reasons. Would also, the general good would also be served if one political subdivision would provide services to that subdivision rather than two, covering such things as police, fire, ambulance, snow removal, street repair, building codes, et cetera. Annexation would also eliminate the uncertainty to potential buyers wanting to know why their subdivision and street is in two communities. This annexation would be to the exclusive benefit of the owners, which is stated in some of the court decisions, in the planning, developing, building, and selling of these lots. The annexation to Vermillion is the choice of the owner of the property. We respectfully request that you grant our petition for the annexation of 32 acres to the city of Vermillion from the township of Brownhelm. Thank you.
Is there someone, is there a spokesperson from the township? I see several of the trustees are here together. They're clerk. Do you have a spokesperson on? Good morning, Marcia.
The trustee chairman, Dane Leinbach, sends his apologies for not being able to be here, but he sent along this document that he wrote last night for me to read.
Before you read it, would you identify yourself? I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, I'm Marcia Funk. I'm the clerk of the township. Trustee Fred Bark, he's also out of town. Richard Northheim is present.
Thank you.
And this is Dane's wording. "It is my understanding of the current annexation laws, that providing all procedures are followed correctly, then the only area of discretion allowed the commissioners is to examine whether or not the proposed annexation is in the best interest of the community. Since no one has ever defined this rather ambiguous phrase for me, I will have to provide you with points that we believe conform to this standard. We hope that you agree. While no one is able to change history," to paraphrase a wise man, "if we do not learn from it, we are doomed to repeat it. In the case of annexing township land to the city of Vermillion, there are many points that have been bitter lessons that we do not wish to repeat. The most prominent of these lessons is that the city, Vermillion City Government, for over 30 years, made decisions that resulted in the steady deterioration of the streets in much of what was unincorporated Brownhelm Township. When this area of the township was annexed in 1962, the city became responsible for roads that previous to the annexation had been the sole responsibility of Brownhelm Township. In the ensuing three decades, the condition of these streets deteriorated to the point that some of them were hazardous to travel. To the township, this demonstrated a lack of concern for the residents of the area that had been annexed. We do not wish this to continue in more of the township, as this is definitely not in the best interest of the community. The city of Vermillion in the immediate future will not be able to provide this area with any infrastructure services that do not already exist. Water for this area is not provided by the city, but rather by Northern Ohio Rural Water, the system that also serves Brownhelm Township, as well as most of the southeastern portion of the city of Vermillion. At the time the former Erie-Huron County Rural Water Authority was planning their system, the city had not provided water service to this area, though this was one of the promises that was offered prior to the 1962 annexation. The residents of this area petitioned the city to allow the new authority to service this area, and only under extreme distress was this allowed to happen. Without this rural water system, this area of the city of Vermillion would probably not have a municipal water system today. This area of the city of Vermillion has no municipal wastewater collection system, and at present, none is planned. Thus, if this area of Brownhelm Township is allowed to be annexed to the city of Vermillion, the development that is planned for the area will fall under the jurisdiction of the Erie County Health Department. Brownhelm Township has been informed by a township resident, who is also a home builder, that the Erie County Septic Regulations are less stringent than those of Lorraine County. With a residential development plan for the petitioner's property, this, in our opinion, is not an acceptable situation, and again, definitely not in the best interests of the community. Again, historically speaking, the Vermillion Streets Department in the winter has not been able to provide the snow clearing services to this area of the city with the efficiency that Brownhelm Township is able to provide in the areas of the township immediately adjacent to the portion of the city of Vermillion. If this territory is annexed to the city, any new streets would be added to service load of a city streets department seemingly not able to provide satisfactory service to an area already underserved. Again, commissioners, a point not in the best interest of the community. It is the experienced and studied position of Brownhelm Township that adding this land to the territory of the city of Vermillion would serve no useful purpose to the residents of the city of Vermillion, nor to those residents of the unincorporated portion of Brownhelm Township, and further would be a detriment to Brownhelm Township, clearly not in the best interests of the community. We urge you to deny the acceptance of this annexation petition. Thank you again for this time. Sincerely, Dane Leinbach, Chairman, Brownhelm Township Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this annexation who would like to give testimony at this time? Good morning, Mayor Davis.
No question, I'm probably in a minority here today. My name is Jimmy Davis. I'm the mayor of the city of Vermillion, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. The annexation request came from the property owner to the city of Vermillion, and it was, in fact, an effort to uniform the effort, unify the effort that they were proceeding with, with the development of this parcel. As noted before, there's two jurisdictions, actually more than two, that have to be dealt with to develop the property in the manner in which the owner wishes to go forward with. I guess, at this point, I would certainly take exception to the comments previously made about the standards and quality of services provided by the city of Vermillion. I'm not interested at this point in time, going back 40 years, to promises made by people that are not here today, nor held responsible for meeting the standards of today, where it's 2001, and in my opinion, we're moving forward. The services provided are, in fact, provided by the township as well in some cases. Fire protection is provided by the city of Vermillion through contract with Brownhelm Township. Ambulance services provided through the city of Vermillion agreement through contract to the township. Snow removal and ice, de-icing services would be provided by the city of Vermillion Streets Department. And again, I stand proud of the services provided by that department. We can discuss the merit of quality. That is a subjective issue. I think we do a fine job. Stormwater management is an item provided by the city of Vermillion. There are other services, police in particular, would be a unique service provided by the city of Vermillion if this property were to be annexed. The issue at hand is the detrimental impact on the township. I want to point out one thing. The city of Vermillion is somewhat of a unique community. It is situated in two counties, Erie and Lorraine County. It is situated in two school districts, the Fireland School District, which this particular section of property is located, and the Vermillion Local School District. It is also situated in two townships. There is no request here to remove this property from Brownhelm Township. It would remain in Brownhelm Township. The entire eastern portion of the city of Vermillion still remains in Brownhelm Township and pays fees for that existence. So there is no request to remove this property from Brownhelm Township, but to add it into the incorporated portion of the city of Vermillion. The services provided, the quality of participation from one body for the creation of the subdivision, in my opinion, merits positive consideration by this body. In addition, while there is water provided by a rural water authority, that is established by charter in the city of Vermillion, and again, that was past history. We do work closely with that water authority, and in fact, they are indeed providing water services for our industrial park now in the city of Vermillion and Brownhelm Township. So I guess I take exception to the detriment and the negative impact on the township. I think it would be a positive impact on the township, as well as the city of Vermillion, and certainly to the owner of the property. So I am very much in favor of the annexation, and frankly, can't find a reason not to annex, except if you want to dig up old history. We're not doing that, or should we? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Is there anyone who wishes to speak further in opposition to this annexation? Since this is a public hearing, please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Jim Odom. I presently live at 11017 Market Street in Birmingham, but was a previous resident of Brownhelm Township for the past 48, 49 years. I graduated from Fireland High School in 1955. At the time when Ford was coming out here to annex the area, or Lorraine was coming out to annex the area, there was a great fear of them coming into Vermain on the lake and taking a lot more property than they did to get the Ford plant. Graduating out of high school, I went to work for Ford Motor Company in 1960. In 1962, they annexed the area. Vermain did annex the area. And as Jimmy Davis said, you don't want to reminisce on things that were promised for 40 years that weren't taken, but the services that are being provided right now, at the cost to the residents, is no different than if it stays in Brownhelm Township or goes to the city of Vermain. Example, in 1995, when I left there, I sold my home in 1996 and retired from Ford. I paid the city of Vermain close to $300 in city income tax. I paid the township $28.66. The road that runs by this property that this gentleman wants to annex, and we have no objection to him building homes, but the road that runs by that piece of property, which is North Ridge Road, was not serviced by the city of Vermain. It was blacktopped by the Brownhelm Township trustees. They have done a lot of blacktopping in that area, which is in the city part of Brownhelm Township, Klaus Road, and other roads that have been taken care of. And he's right, there is a contract with the city of Vermain to provide the fire service, but the Brownhelm Township trustees also have a contract for ambulance service. The sheriff department has put extra people on duty out there. It's being covered a lot more than it used to be. The only thing the city of Vermain can provide this gentleman is a police car to be going in and out and patrolling that area, and I don't have, there's no problem with that. But the cost to the residents that buy these homes compared to what it would cost them to the township in comparison to the services they're going to get from the city, they're really not going to get a lot of service from the city. It's being taken care of by the township right now. So I'm opposed to them taking any more property. And furthermore, the danger here is, this rural area is sitting very openly to a lot of development, and I can foresee someone else coming in and developing and requesting annexation, and the thing just being blown out of proportion. I'd like to ask you, the commissioners, a question. Is a piece of legislation laying in Columbus as we speak that probably will come into effect sometime early fall, where, I believe if I read it correctly, if you let an annexation take place after that piece of legislation is gone, you have to provide the loss of revenue to the township after the annexation? Am I correct in that?
Mr. Anis could probably address that.
This annexation has to be decided according to the laws that exist now. Now, if that legislation passes, the things you've mentioned would come into effect regarding annexations filed subsequent to the passing, but as of right now, we have to deal with the law as it exists right now.
I think that the question was, though, is there a provision in the new legislation? Wasn't that your question, Mr. Odom?
The answer to the question, there are those provisions in the new legislation if it goes through. He's correct about that.
It's just, it may be a point down the line where a lot of these annexations may not take place because of, unless you can really prove that services are going to be rendered in a much better fashion than what they're being done today. And other than the fact of the convenience of the developer, where he's dealing with two different sewer systems, two different counties, two different phone systems, two different school districts, that area is chopped all to pieces, and everybody's known that ever since we've lived there, and people that buy in there realize that when they come out there. It's on the county line, and it's just a bad situation. But I would like to leave it in the township, leave the township, take care of what they've already got. The city of Vermain's got all they can do to take care of what's down there, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience? Please step forward and state your name.
Good morning. I'm Raymond Damanski. I'm also the chairman of the Brownhelm Zoning Board of Appeals. There's two things I take exception with, Mr. Caruso's request. Nobody from Mr. Caruso's entourage ever decided to talk to Brownhelm about any of this. Never talked to us what we could do, what we couldn't do. I don't think that was right. The other I take exception with is saying the police protection is better in Vermain. We have an outstanding sheriff's department, always have, and we will have in the future. We have community policing. We can provide whatever services Mr. Caruso requests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment? Please come forward, state your name, ma'am.
My name is Jody Frimmel, and I live in Brownhelm Township. I'm not a neighbor of this development, however. I own and operate a small business called Mill Hollow Nursery, and I'm the co-founder and member of Brownhelm Historic Association, and we are a large and growing active group. I would just like to say that as a member of a proud and historic community, when will this all stop, I guess, the annexation? When will the next developer come along and want to annex a piece and part of us? And when will then the next one come, and the next one? And then we won't have the historic And then, then we won't have the historic and proud Brownhelm Township that we know that exists right now? And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Marie Canterbury. I live at 3831 Globe Avenue in Lorraine. I was born and raised in Brownhelm Township, graduated from Brownhelm High School, when we still had a high school there. And my roots go deep out there, even though I'm not a resident currently. My great-grandfathers on both sides of my family came there in the 1830s and 1840s and settled there, and the descendants also lived there for a great number of years. Brownhelm Township was a very great place to grow up in, and it was just a small, quiet farming community. Well, then we had Ford come in. And I kind of liken this to the idea of, you win the lottery. Okay, all of a sudden, you've got all these people saying, well, they want to help you. All they want to do is help you spend your money. So pieces of Brownhelm Township keep going, and I think if we allow any more pieces to go, it's setting a dangerous precedent for the future, because there is a lot of other developable land there that probably will be in not too many years. And I don't see that the people that will be buying these homes will be enriched by being annexed to Vermillion. I think they will probably have higher taxes than if they remained in the township, and I think it would be setting a dangerous precedent to just go ahead and, you know, buy piece and piece and piece, annex, and take away from Brownhelm Township. Brownhelm Township, as some have said there, and I mean, I can see, they have maintained the roads there and provided services for the people there. And I don't see that there is anything to gain by this annexation, not for the township or not for the people that are going to be buying these homes.
Thank you, Marie. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Sheriff Stemedy?
Hi, Phil Stemedy, Lorraine County Sheriff. I guess the only thing I take exception to a lot of times is a lot of these annexation questions come up, and he always uses the safety services as one of the biggest excuses. And I do take exception to that because I'm all for progress, and Vermillion Police Department has an excellent police department. I know many of the officers there and the chief. But the deputies at my department also provide an excellent service, and they do an excellent job. You know, we have things at the SO Sheriff's Office that some departments don't have, such as a drug task force, we have a multi-jurisdictional SWAT team, we have a bomb squad, I have a five-man detective bureau, I have five community policing officers, and about 32 road deputies. And I'm not here to argue about whether Vermillion can do a better job or officers. I think we can do comparable jobs. And we do borderline against many cities and villages, and I think all departments will back each other up no matter what the instance is, because sometimes their cars are tied up, sometimes our cars are tied up. But I just don't want that to be one of the excuses of why this should happen, because we get no complaints from any of the citizens in that area that the sheriff's department doesn't provide an excellent service.
Thank you, Sheriff Stemedy. Anyone else? Please step forward.
My name's Chuck Laddo. I live in Brownhelm Township on Claus Road, and I own the property adjacent to the development.
Where, sir? Would you show us, please?
Would be on the west side and behind it.
Thank you.
So we have property on the farm that is in Vermillion and also in Brownhelm Township. So we're kind of unique to this and practical application, and kind of right in the center of it. And I'd like to repeat what the sheriff said, that I've had to call on response from the sheriff's department, where our residence is in Brownhelm around the corner, but it's all contiguous to the same parcel. We've had excellent response and terrific cooperation and help with any problems that we've had out there. And fortunately, we haven't had the need of the parcel that's in Vermillion to have call on them. I do see the cars out there, but it was a real quick response by the sheriff's department. I guess I look at this, trying to keep emotion out of it, to, you know, what's in the best interest of the property owners and the people. And I hate to see a piece cut up and annexed into Vermillion at the convenience of maybe the builder, which I think I've heard also mentioned here, that when people come out here, they know the circumstances of the uniqueness of the property, being close to Erie County and in Lorraine County, and the fire and the water, and rural water was one of the things that were brought out there, not necessarily because of Vermillion, and it definitely was an asset to the area. So I guess I'm speaking as someone that lives close to it and in the heart of it, that I would like to not see the annexation going forth and being chopped up just at the convenience of maybe a builder that would come out, and keep Brownhelm Township as Brownhelm Township. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?